This conference will now be recorded.
To order. Oh, time being 4:48 PM, I'd like to call the meeting of June 15th, 2023 to order. We will now stand and say the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, for which it stands. We have minutes of June 1st, 2023. And right off, I will tell you that we have a correction on the top. It says Thursday, June 6th, and on the very bottom, it says Wednesday, June 1st. So those are corrections that have already been noticed. Would you? Looking at the minutes of June 1st. Page one of six. If we don't know the name, I would not put it in with a question mark. That's the only. Under the Alpine Environmental. Has a parentheses, wrong, question mark, question mark, question mark. I would just leave that out. Not sure, but the owner of Alpine Environmental joined the conversation is sufficient. He gave us a list of the. To find money, correct. And so I think, but I'm not sure what he named the file. Correct. Anyone else? They have those corrections, Jeannie, you all set with them? Okay. All right, moving on, we are. Meeting with the Pine Community Center Executive Brittany Stewart and. Go ahead, Jeannie. Going to correct them, right? And then we'll accept them, correct? All right, Brittany, do you want to introduce who you have with you? All right, welcome. How you doing? Okay. Do you? Want us to go on with something else for a few minutes? Or do you want to go ahead?
She should be here any moment.
Okay, good. So. This is in reference to an email that we got, just in case you didn't. Board, you forgot your emails. From. A taxpayer, did you get the copy of that? You did not? I thought that was forwarded to. Jeannie, okay.
I was made aware.
Okay.
Keep in mind, and I can share what Scott, over here.
I've seen, I've seen it too.
I give Catherine a minute to read it as well because she wasn't as, she wasn't on the board at the time.
I have the information that this. And we're there, I'm surprised I haven't heard from the Northfield Board of. And I am very familiar with this. Had unfortunately issues in the past, and it doesn't all come to staffing. Unfortunately, I think it came down to the fact that this particular.
If you're going to go into very specifics about an individual, do you need it to be non-public?
It depends on what you would like to know, I suppose.
Board? Well, it doesn't matter, we still support the pine, so it doesn't.
No, we understand that, and like I said, I haven't been reached out to by the Northfield Selectmen, but. I'm very familiar with this particular issue.
Okay. All right, so.
We can always come back in when we discuss.
Correct.
Yeah, we can discuss the proximate.
All right, so we want to know about this, this, so, okay. Is Tim around, Jeannie? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public. Per R S A 91A, colon, three. Two matters which discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board unless such person requests an open meetings. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of fee, fine, or levy if based on inability to pay a poverty of the applicant. That's probably 15 minutes, and we'll be back online, folks that are online with us.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second, Scanlon.
Second by Scanlon, roll call vote, please.
Jessman, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Okay, we're now non-public, thank you, Scott.
I knew that. This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Feel the minutes. Okay. So. We have the, back again, everyone, we have the Pines Community Center and the board here. Go ahead. No. Here to talk and respond to a resident of Northfield in regards to. An after-school program, and so I'm going to open it up to the board and the director, Brittany, to explain in a summary on why this person is writing this email to the Board of Selectmen in Tilton. Hold on one second, Brittany. Up there, oh.
So, yeah, unfortunately, in January, we had four employees leave our organization to pursue other ventures, some of which were unfortunately due in fact to pay rates. Though we have increased pay rates, once we became licensed, we kind of had to with the requirements and the eligibility and the criteria necessary to work alone with the kids. We're still not in a position where we are as competitive as we could be, unfortunately. And we also had an employee at that time who informed us that they would be getting a second job to start the new year off to supplement their income, obviously due in fact to, once again, pay rates. So, yes, we had a waitlist for our after-school program. It was four children, so at that time, we made the decision to, you know, inform those parents that we would not be able to accommodate their children until we were to hire new staff to make sure that we met the state of New Hampshire's childcare licensing ratios. We did not want to be put in a position where if we had a call-out, or two call-outs for that matter, because unfortunately, that is something that happens. Some of our staff have, like I said, other jobs, other commitments, and, you know, it, it happens more often than we would like, unfortunately. So we didn't want to be put in that position, so we made the decision, as I mentioned, to leave those children on the waitlist until we were able to hire more staff. We did hire a staff member, and she worked one shift before informing us that she would no longer be able to work for us because of her schedule at Pomistate University. So, I mean. Around, on the whole, essentially, this is happening everywhere. It's been really challenging for us to retain, retain staff, or find staff for that matter. We still have a position for a maintenance coordinator that we've been advertising for, for over four months. And now Samantha, myself, and another individual will be taking on that role, as well as our own roles, through the summer, which, as you can imagine, will be challenging. We're continuing to look to hire somebody, we're getting the word out, but it is unfortunately happening everywhere where it's challenging to retain staff and challenging to find staff.
Thank you.
Directors, you have anything else to add to it?
No, I think that, given the span of time that we're discussing, Brittany and Samantha put in more hours than I would have expected them to put in. We had a, we had the pines open as a shelter for that cold spell, which caused a pipe to burst for us, and so we had the basement flooded. They were there on Saturdays and Sundays, mopping and cleaning and meeting plumbers. So during that timeframe, I just feel like they really, they put in their salary, as the email says. And just to note that the, we did address the waitlist as soon as you had the staff.
We did. And I, not to add to that, but we have not had a maintenance person since December, so I have been, as well as Ms. Samantha, I've been doing the snowblowing, I've been doing the mowing, I have been, we've been mopping, we've been working together to do trash, bathrooms, you name it, because we're still a fully functioning community center that has lots of groups and kids coming in every day, day in, day out. And, I mean, yes, it included weekends, and some of our fundraisers are on weekends, and, you know, it's taxing, and.
Sounds it. Board, any questions for the board or Brittany?
On the agenda, were we also going to discuss the, the contribution? The contribution from, yeah, the budget from Tilton.
That was my next question, go ahead.
Nope.
Go ahead.
You want me to lead with it?
Yeah.
So. We've had to grapple with, and I speak as not only a member of the board, but also part of the Budget Committee too. When we looked at the percentage and percentage of use, Northfield, non-Tilton, Northfield residents, and then Tilton residents. The numbers have become sort of glowing that we've got a far lower percentage of Tilton residents using the pine services than, than, than Northfield. And for us and on the Budget Committee, the question now has to, very honestly, has to become is, you know, should we be giving an equivalent amount to Northfield if our residents aren't using an equivalent amount of services? So that was the, that was the gist of the questions that have come in terms of budgeting overall.
I mean, I guess my thoughts, it fluctuates, I mean, I know that the numbers over the past few years, it's, it's really hard to say. I mean, it really does fluctuate, and it depends on the program. I mean. I, I think, I'm completely understanding of the thought process behind it, I am. You know, I guess my question would be if, you know, a decision's made and we, if the budget goes as that, as to the appropriation comes based on numbers, you know, what if that number changes halfway through the budget year? And now we're in a position where I have Northfield coming to me and saying, and not to say that we haven't got, gotten a better relate, working relationship with Northfield at this point, I would say, but not to say that they wouldn't come and say, well, they're only giving this much, and, you know, Tilton, you know, I mean, they're only giving this much, what makes, why, why should we be paying that much? We, you know, if now their town, they're 60% and we're 40% as far as numbers go. So I think that that would be the one question I would have, what would you do in that circumstance? And, I mean, the other thing is, is that I, you know, would think that, I think there might be some question from Northfield, but there might not, it's really hard to say, but, you know.
You're talking percentage, or you're talking overall attendance percentage, or like if 100 people were attending?
No, so the numbers that we were given for the Budget Committee included all programming. All programming, which, you know, as, as I know that you account for who, who's using it out of Northfield, Tilton, and then non-residents. So that was all, the all-programming numbers over the last two years were, they, they sort of opened our eyes a little bit on the Budget Committee, and then it's been discussions that we've had very, very briefly, but we wanted to bring it forward. I believe if I, if my review, and I reviewed it over a week ago, so I believe if we look at last year's numbers, Tilton residents, or Tilton residents were, were 31% of the use in terms of all, everything that everyone had to sign in for. So, and then the year prior, I believe, I, off the top of my head, I'm going to say it was, it floated right around 40%.
How many residents are there in Tilton?
Approximately 3,500, approximately 3, 36.
36 is closer.
Yep.
I was just, I'm asking that question because I'm curious, I didn't know if that was similar in population to Northfield, because obviously, if one town has a higher population than the other, those numbers are going to look.
They're going to be skewed, absolutely.
There's about 4,500 in Northfield.
And unfortunately, I think too, I mean, a lot of the events that we put on, people aren't signing in for those, so they're participating, but they're not signing in. And, I mean, that could throw the numbers off a little bit, and, you know, I don't know for certain, and I, it's hard, I couldn't, I can't, unfortunately, we can't stand at the door and say, what town are you guys from, when they're coming into like crap fair, the breakfast, and all the other events that we put on throughout the year, but that's a number, another thing that, you know.
Anybody else? None. Appreciate very much that you come in and take the time out to answer our questions for us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have. Next on our agenda is the. Emergency Rental Assistant, but it's 5:45, do you have your report? You want to? Okay. We need to, we need to give you a mic.
Couple issues relative to the Town Hall project, but that's a separate. Agenda item, so I'll, I'll hold those for that. At the last. Meeting, it was the meeting before, there was a discussion about getting AEDs, one for upstairs and one for downstairs at Town, Town Hall. We did get bids, and they range anywhere from $1,400 up to. $2,400, the one that was recommended back when we got the quote was called the Philips Heart Start On-Site AED, which is a portable mobile package. For a total of $1,043.79, and that was recommended by Tim Jubert, who was then the Deputy Fire Chief. So. I don't know if you want to. Have us purchase one now for upstairs, given the situation, or if, given the fact that you're holding on all spending, but I thought I brought it forward, you can decide.
That was the number one thing that, item that the employees had expressed concern with. And, but, training needs to also coordinate with that. If we purchased them two, one for downstairs, because that will be finished soon, by the time. By the time training is coordinated, the downstairs will be finished, and that could be installed. The second one could be installed, and then we have that safety. The parameters there. So my recommendation, and I'll make a motion to purchase two. And also to coordinate with the fire department for AED. Instructions.
I was taking it for the sake of discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Where does that money come from? Building made under, is it partly unspent wages?
Unspent, I would say unspent wages from the PD.
We have an equipment purchase line.
Is it spent?
It's not spent as of June 1st.
How much is in there?
Eight, $8,333. 8,333.
Well, that's enough to cover the purchase.
Then you got another equipment rental slash maintenance. 1,401.
Is that under administration?
This is administration.
That earmarked for something?
Not that I'm aware of. We've overspent. Administrative equipment, maintenance, and repair. Roof. And why those two lines are. Anyway. So I would say equipment and purchases, since it's $8,333 in there right now.
If we know that there's that in there and unspent wages, why not just let Tim figure it out from there?
Includes 7.5,000 encumbrance for copier.
There you go. A fine line, I knew there was something. So we'll ask Tim to figure it out, go ahead.
So, and I think it's a very worthwhile expenditure, and to do it, I think that one would be sufficient, that people could, if it was near the front door, by the lobby, and everybody knew where it was, it's, they're very quick to run and grab and get it. That it's not going to be a big time change in that for it, that if we get one, start with that. That somebody could easily come grab it and.
And climb up the stairs and, and use it?
Walk up the stairs, jump, run up the stairs, yeah, and use it.
You'll have time?
I've been, I've been through AED training, and, and just as a reference, like, in, in the gymnasium at Tilton School, we have one AED, so even if we have a crowd of 400 or 500, there's one AED centrally located so that we could use it, whether for athletes upstairs in the cardio room, all of that stuff. So you'll, you'll have, you will have time with, if going through my AED and CPR training, you would have time, they had it, even had to climb the stairs to get to some of them.
Yeah, I've been through the training, but I can't remember the timeframe, because we have one at the senior center, which they, the fire department got with a grant. But I can't remember the timeframe that you have.
Just thinking budget-wise, and, you know, some of our expenditures, that if we get the one, at least now, we could mount it upstairs for this while everybody's up there, because we wouldn't be mounting anything downstairs, and then get the training, I think.
What does the board think about that?
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
This is the jump start machine, right?
Yep, it is.
Yes.
Supposed to start mouth-to-mouth and cardio pumination first, right?
First, yeah.
So theoretically, that's what would be being done. And then somebody would have time to go get the jump start.
You don't automatically just give somebody the AED.
No, you don't.
That's.
Okay.
Especially if they're taking a nap or something.
Right. I'll amend my motion to one. Seems like that's the consensus. With still keep the instruction. Men just second there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, seems that's the consensus, one. Any more discussion? All those in favor of purchasing one AED with asking the fire department for instruction?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And just, and one other thing with that, I think that we should go and have employees trained on.
Well, that was the instruction.
The CPR.
Oh, the CPR as well?
Because AED is one thing, but CPR is something that. You know. I think the, the fire department has the. Assessant, Annie, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
And they even have an infant, but. There, but.
Okay.
Be nice to have that for everybody, or any town employees or boards in that case. Be trained.
Okay.
Okay. Do you, do you want me to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the other item, I forwarded to you an email that. Add with our current contracted attorney prosecutor, and really want to find out from the board if you want to contract with him for another month. Which would be the month of July, because right now, the contract is for May and June.
Did everyone read the, the chief's report? Did you read the chief's report, he's on vacation? Oh, he's on vacation for two weeks in July? June, July, so.
I missed the whole vacation part.
Okay. He is, he has applications, and he is looking to put together. Hopefully with the help of Jeannie, to a panel of some sort to go through those applications. But if you think about, is, is he available? If you think about the timeframe of putting together a panel, interviewing, interviewing folks, which is, you know. If you think about the timeframe of putting together a panel, interviewing, interviewing folks, which is, you know, a two, three week turnaround, and then if you choose one, that's at least a two or three week per, you know, giving them their employer a notice. Now you're into August. So if we extend it for one month, we're, we're shot changing ourselves here. My opinion, my opinion only, and I think that Jeannie would agree that we should extend it for July and August and have him shadow the last two weeks, because him, her, whoever it is. Otherwise, we'll be seeking out and hiring somebody in approximately maybe the first two weeks of the second week or so, you're probably going to hire somebody in August. And you won't, what's going to happen in those first two weeks without a prosecutor? When he ends on July 30th?
Postponed, delayed? I didn't exactly like his terms. Kind of spendy to me. What's the current, that's what my question is, what's the current contract price?
Eighty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Which is what?
That's an extra two grand.
Which was what Jesse was, was eighty-five hundred.
Well, and he was only offering to stay until the end of July, right?
He, so when we had the conversation with him to begin with, Jesse was very helpful in finding someone to do the contract for that time period. He was only interested in May and June. He really, he's, he's the attorney prosecutor and conquered in other places. He was really doing this because Jesse asked him to. He said he'd do May and June and that was it. That was all he was interested in. And when it looked like, it looked like we were going to need him in July, Tim and I went back to him and said, you know, would you stay another month? What would that look like? And that's what you saw in that email, because he really doesn't want to. But the concern is, the way where we're at in the process, I think probably won't have anyone until August or the end of August. So there may be a gap. And I'm not even sure that, because I haven't had the conversation with him about August. So I, I'm not even sure if he's available. But I just wanted to stay ahead of it to find out what you want to do, because I don't want to wait too long and then have, have nothing if you want to move forward on this. Abe's on his way down.
If we can get a guy.
Talk about Draghi.
Hey. Good, good. Got to listen to the radio, because I'm, we should have sent Franklin and I'm the, I'm the guy. All right.
So Abe, I was, I was just saying to the selectmen that when we contracted with John, he was, said he would do May and June. He would do July, but he's really, really wasn't, when we had talked to him earlier on, he said he was only interested in May and June. And with the process that you're in right now, I'm concerned that we may even need him for August. Unless you are farther along in the process than I'm aware of.
No, I don't, I don't think we'll need August. I mean, I think, I think we'll be fine with July. The end of July, the 31st. I mean, when we set up that panel and we have who we have in there, obviously it's been pretty tight lately with getting everything done. So we just need to get a panel. We had, we have four applicants right now that applied for the job. So once we put that together, it's going to be quick and kind of ask those questions, do what we need to do. I did meet with two of the applicants, because it was, one of them, that was the first one that no one had applied, it was within the first week. And then there was nobody, then another one trickled in. So then I, I sat down with that person. And then two more, as we were closing just last week, applied. So we have four altogether, all great candidates. So I don't think it'll be a difficult decision. I think the difficult part of it is which one, as in, I think last time it was a little bit different, if you remember. I think we have some good candidates to go. It's just then timing out who, with, with the time, I think, and that's what, what Jeannie is, is probably wondering.
So when would you put the panel together?
I would hope to put the panel together. You know, now that we're going to get the evaluations done tonight, tomorrow, make some phone calls to see who I can put together. And then start making some phone calls tomorrow to see what we can do as in the first round of people to take care of those.
When, next week?
As in, put the panel together, find the people that, that can, that can be on that panel, which I know the people that I'm going to talk to, and they'll be available, except maybe one or two. And then I'll call those, the, the applicants, and then send them, find out exactly when they're available, and hopefully at least get two in by next week.
So
End of next week.
You're trying to get in at least two of the four next week?
Yeah.
Okay. So next week is the second to the last week in June. The last week in June, you're not here.
Yep.
And then the first week in July, you're not here.
Yep.
So that means you'll get two in the second week of July.
If I can get all four of them by next week, that's my plan.
That's if.
Yeah.
So the second week in July, you'll get the second two, maybe if the plan goes right. Then you, the following week, you make a choice out of the four. That's, that's the third week in July. Now they have to give employment, maybe two weeks. Their, their employers, their own employers, probably a two week. Now you're looking into the first week in August, second week in August. So do you want them just to dive into things, or do you want them to shadow Draghi a little bit on the cases?
I mean, my, my plan would be to shadow. I mean, I think that would be his plan also, but if it doesn't, if the cards don't, don't.
So now you're looking into the second week and third week of August. That, am I, are you following along with me?
I'm following along, yep.
Okay. Jeannie, you got your hand up?
I would, I, I guess I, and I would also assume that whoever the recommendation is, that he would, the chief would bring that to the board for you to meet, to decide, because you're the ultimate hiring authority.
Right, too.
So you've got that. And then, then the offer's made. And then you have to do background check and whatever they decide to give for notice, so.
Thank you.
Background check would be whatever you guys decide what you're going to do for background. And we'll do our part, but that wasn't, that wasn't, I think, completed the first time with the, the first prosecutor. Whatever the town decided for a background check is what they did. We, we didn't, we didn't run a full background check.
And, and we do.
We did a background.
That's what I'm saying.
So if we have someone come in, new to the town.
Yep.
We would do a full background, which is a week, week and a half, maybe two?
Two to three, depending on how.
Oh, two to. Used to be two, but two and a half, you're saying, okay. So it's just a recommendation for me.
The, the.
August.
Yeah, I guess what I was just trying to understand is, from the board is, do, do you want to move forward with at least securing him for the month of July, because I, I want to be able to. And I would imagine the chief would too want to tell him that we want him for July, at least, at the very least.
I do.
Don't have a choice? Maybe talk to him about August too.
Yeah.
Explain our dilemma.
Yep.
I mean.
If that does anything.
Because that's the problem. It's a little bit different than what I do, and I said that from the very beginning. Prosecution is not my bread and butter. I said that from the very get-go, from the day one.
Yep.
Hold the minutes. You heard what I said. I said, I said that this is not, I was pulled in last time because I was the lieutenant at the time, or actually probably the sergeant. And I sat on that panel. This is new to me. I did sit with the two, I can make a decision today, right now, who I think I would recommend being the next, the next prosecutor. But it's a non-contractual agreement and we need to have a board and we need to have selectmen in there, or maybe, you know, have Jeannie. And that's, and that's the thing. So it's a little bit different and, and we only had so much time to do that. I was, by the time we got the contract, we got it put into the paper, we weren't getting anybody. You, you had a small window to see the best you could get, and I was surprised to even get four in that little window of time. So, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's just so much time. So little time.
We understand that.
Yeah.
We're just trying to help you out here.
No, absolutely. It's just, everything comes quick in this time of the year. Just go, go, go. So, and I know John. I mean, he, he's going to do it because he knows, and him and I have kind of built a relationship, and I can tell that he just wants to help me and whatever. I don't feel good about asking him to stay any longer than what it was. So.
Okay. So board, ask him for July and question him, inquire about August, correct? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Consensus.
Okay.
All right. Thanks Abe, we'll see you a little bit later?
Yes.
Are you going to stay with?
I'll be in the office over here. Oh, yes.
Oh, no.
Yes, yep.
We have this here now.
Yep. That's what I thought.
Are we on our time?
I just have a couple more. Did you want me to finish or go to?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. So the project or the activity on Mechanic Street, the summary, the motion for summary enforcement has, is being filed with the court system. They did all the newspaper advertising. So I just wanted to let you know that's, that continues to move forward. And once that's approved, then all the trash can be removed from the property. Did meet with McFarland Johnson, Brian Colburn, last Thursday on the Kalath Hill Road project, and they are going to draft up a proposal for an engineering estimate for the reconstruction of 1.97 miles of Kalath Hill Road. That engineering study, the document that they come up with has to go in front of DOT and they have to approve it as well. So when we had the conversation with them, he asked, well, what is it that you want? And we, our response is, we want a road. If we're going to take over this road, we want a road that's going to last for 20 years, which means full reconstruction. And his response back, well, the DOT is not gonna, they're not going to go for full reconstruction, because they, they're probably not going to believe that it needs full reconstruction, full box reconstruction. So that's kind of what we're dealing with and we'll we'll continue to work with Brian, but I think we are probably going to have to push back a little bit with DOT about what this town wants if you're going to take over that road.
Back a lot.
Yeah.
And it's, that's my thought, that unless it's up to standards and something that's going to last, we don't, yeah. I think we're all on the same page with that. We don't, we don't want it, because, you know, if the upheaval of rocks are going to pop up through the road in a few years, we just.
Drainage has always been a huge issue on that road, the lack of. And if you drive it, there aren't shoulders, you wonder where the drainage would go. But that has caused a lot of damage on that road.
Property.
Hazards, the ice that forms in two sections on that road because of the lack of drainage.
And created a lot of yards, neighbors, sellers, a lot of damaged houses, too.
And we have that young, that young man who came before us who's finishing off his house at the base of that.
At the base, correct, yeah.
I want to inherit that liability.
Right.
We're all fixed, yeah.
If they're not going to do it right, then.
They can keep it and fix it on their own.
Correct.
Correct. Forever.
Absolutely.
And so the last item is the parade coming up. I assume you all want to be in the parade, just to let Kevin know? No? Okay.
I will not be.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll be in the parade.
Yes.
Nothing more I like than hanging out.
Yeah, June 24th.
Nothing more I like than hanging out in a dump truck with Joe Jessen.
Will there be candy?
I will, I will be picking up the candy. I will pick up the candy and sort the bags out. I will do that. I'll get the card from Gail. Tradition.
That's all I got.
All right.
Thank you.
So four, right? That was on my list. Okay. All right, Heather. We're talking to Heather Thibodeau, welfare director on Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Uh, chief's going to join you? Absolute, pull the chair up. How you doing?
I'm good. Hey, chief.
Hey, how you doing?
Long time no chat.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for having us in, and thank you for your interest and support of dealing with the homeless issues in town. I think the chief and I can both tell you we're working in coordination to deal with these issues. They're not fun. They've been ongoing for a long time, and they did become more exasperated over the last few months because of the homeless program where they put people in motels and then they cut the funding. And that is continuing. The funding will continue to be stopped over the next month or so. But we're going to work, continue to work on it together. And I think we've got a grasp on it.
How many people do you think that they housed in Tilton with this monies?
It's, it's hard to say, because they were not, there was all different people putting them in there. I mean, all different caseworkers putting them in there, or what they called housing navigators in different programs. For, I heard from a woman yesterday, and she was put here from a program up north, but it was all CAP program up north. So it wasn't a.
I would say, I would say when we were dealing, or at least having some of the influx at the hotels, we found out the CAP program was going on. I think both places at one time at about 34, so about 68. And that could be families, that's rooms, not talking about.
That's rooms. That's not families.
But sometimes families had two rooms. And I, for Christmas time, I had 12 families, but then I had a number of single people. So it just varied. I mean, I still have several people who are classified as families, but like yesterday, it turned out it was not really a family, but CAP didn't know that. But after talking to the woman, I found out it was really a single person, but the kids had left and she's still housed there until tomorrow. So these are the kinds of things that we're working through and dealing with and handling. But, you know, the good news is that legislation passed, and I think that will help us as we work through these problems, but.
Want to explain the legislation for the people that are going to watch this tomorrow?
Oh, yeah. It's SB 110, and that will basically, last year, the New Hampshire Welfare Administrators Association basically formalized the ethics resolution. And it was to prevent, for lack of a better term, welfare playing hot potato or welfare dumping, which we hate to refer to it, but it's basically when one town moves somebody into another town and says they're a problem. So we, they formed an ethics resolution to stop that. So we, they formed an ethics resolution to stop that from happening. And, um, and unfortunately, that does happen, and that there's a variety of reasons why that happens. And it's sometimes lack of training, lack of knowledge, lack of understanding of the law. Burnout, for a variety of reasons. So, you know, I would always push back when that people would come in and say that, you know, they're here and they're applying and everything. And I'd say, well, who put you here? Where did you come from? Go through all those questions. And so that was something I've really been pushing hard on. Then finally, they've decided to, they've codified that in law. And so that should help us greatly. Again, nothing is 100%, but we're gonna really push back on it. But like, I mean, in the last week, I'm gonna give you three examples of what's gone on. Example one, um, I had a case navigator from, up, a case navigator from southern part of the state called. And she said, she had somebody who was staying out in the trails, tried to blame Tilton PD. So of course I texted the chief and I said, what do you know about this person? And he knew who I was talking about. And they said, well, first I said, is this person really staying in Tilton? Because half the time, people don't know where they're really staying. And that's the first question I said, he did. And, um, and they said, well, you know, she's really from Laconia, but she's staying out in the trails and she needs a place to go. And I said, okay. And this was three something, one late in the afternoon. I said, okay. She said, but I have to leave by four. I said, all right, I'll deal with it. I'll try to get ahold of the person. And then they said, well, we have an after hours person. So I continued to work through it. And I finally got ahold of somebody and they said, oh, well, her tent was shredded and all this. I said, okay, well, I'm gonna offer them a shelter. Didn't want to go to a shelter. You know, he'd been dealing with it for a couple of days. We'd been talking about it too, when I found out the name. Fused to go to a shelter. So, you know, when you offer services and they don't go, there's nothing I can do. And then the case navigator said, well, you know, they, they don't want, and I said, well, excuse me, but you have been dealing with them for this individual for how many months or over a year and a half? And nobody really did have made a plan. And now you're telling me you don't want them to go to a shelter? There's gotta be something else we do. So that was that one, and they moved along now. Earlier this week, I, I know a lot of the partner agencies in the area because I've done this for so long, so everybody calls me, and I'm used to that. And a caseworker from a local agency called me and said, we sat in on a call with a client from, one of the towns, and they said, our town ran out of welfare money. I chuckled and the, and the caseworker knew the, knew that you can't run out of welfare money. You, you just can't. It's, it's not an option. You have to maintain the poor in the roads in town, and you, you all know that. So I said, okay. And she said, what do I tell them? They, they helped them for a while, then they said they weren't gonna help them anymore. And so somehow the person got an RV and they moved to a park and ride in the RV. And again, chief knows who I'm talking about. And, and so they moved to the park and ride in the RV, but then they're now staying in a campground, um, not in Tilton. And I said, okay, so explain to me how Tilton fits into all this, because they weren't from Tilton. They parked in a park and ride for 24 hours, and now they're in another town in a campground. They said, well, do you have any suggestions? I said, I have a couple of suggestions. Yes, you go back to the original town, because they're really resident of there. And will, you know, go from there. I said, you know, they said, well, they're not taking the calls. I said, well, what would you like me to do? And they said, well, can you make the call for me? I said, I'll make the call for you, but I know what, you know, is gonna happen, but I will make the call. But those are the kinds of things that we're dealing with. And then yesterday, you know, I got the call from the lady who's been at the Cottrell Lodge for, since March of 22. And, and, um, yeah, March 22, so it's over a year and a half. She supposedly had a couple of kids, so they still paying. She has to be up by tomorrow at 11:00. Doesn't want to go to a shelter. Housing navigator thought she was from Florida. Not Florida, she's from a town, four towns up off the highway. And so when I started to really, I said, but where's your license from? That's how I found out she was really from where she was from. And, you know, what her income was and everything like that. I said, well, that's where you need to go. That's where your real residency is. And she said, well, you know, I don't want to go back, you know, there. And I said, well, these are the options. I said, the other option is a shelter. Well, I don't want to go to a shelter. So, I mean, these are the, these are the scenarios that we're dealing with. And unfortunately, this, you know, this, I think it was a well-intended program. As, you know, everybody was panicking, they didn't know what to do, but it wasn't a well managed. And it isn't just us. It's happened all over the state. Um, 100 people showed up at the Sanford Welfare Office in Maine, just over the border. On this Monday morning, Welfare Director quit, quit suddenly, um, because it was a
I think I would too.
Yeah. And, um, but I do think, I've, I mean, I don't want to jinx this, but I think that between the, the two of us. And I mean, the fact that we can work together, we do have some other, their choice has been wonderful about, you know, reaching out and saying to me, okay, somebody just walked in the door, when can you come in? Or what are, what are we gonna do with this application? Or what, where do we go from here?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we have patrols out and we've put, um, directives out to just kind of monitor the trails, the Winnie Trail. Uh, we get any calls for any encampments or anything like that. We have to go out and make contact, and we do. And then that's when I would usually get the call, or sometimes I've gone out a couple of times, um, actually several times. Um, and officers will come and tell me, and, and then we'll try to come up with a plan. The sergeants will get ahold of me, and then I'll get ahold of Heather. Um, and she's the resource that I go to, um, to try to help, because you gotta think, during the day, that's great. That's, that's, we're a 24 hour police department. And, um, we're not telling them to get out of there or move them along right there and then. We know that there's, 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 um, a process. It's just, uh, we're limited resources also, and we can't cover every part of the woods. So we're trying to do our best to not get to the point where one turns into four, four turns into eight to 16, and then you have an encampment. Um, done a great job. I mean, I don't know, compared to some of the other towns, cities that we've, that we've seen or heard of. So I don't want to jinx ourselves. We've been trying to keep a tab on it, a pulse on it. And, um, I think Heather's been doing a great job. I know I've talked to another gentleman in the CAP program that's called. And we've had people over at the rest areas and things like that. Um, but again, uh, is, I think it was two times that actually called, like she said, uh, got the resources and, um, go over to that, the Tilton, uh, Resource Center and, and get those resources. They're waiting. And I, we offered a ride, and no, I'm gonna walk. And I knew right when I said that, that that wasn't gonna happen. Um, gave it a couple of days, walked back over, and it was like, um, well, I tried to go there today. Well, that was like three days ago. And the money and the, the help isn't there. I mean, now I have to figure it out. Why didn't you go then? I offered you a ride, and a lot of people just don't want to. And some people just, um, I know one just didn't, doesn't get along with people, uh, likes to be by themselves. So you're going to be put into somewhere where you have other people and you're having issues, or you just don't want. So why are you, why are you pushing me along? Why are you not leaving me alone? I'm in the woods. Well, this is somebody else's property. And they actually called us to move you along. So I don't want to get to the point where, where having a trespass order, and then we have to remove you. And then you could be arrested. So we try not to get to that point, but business owners do call us and try to move them along. So we try to do our best to, um, do it the right way, because, I mean, technically, if a business owner says, hey, they gotta leave, they gotta leave. But we can have that, we can be that middle ground. We're like, hey, listen, we're gonna, if it's okay, a couple of days and kind of go from there, so.
He's been very kind about the way he's managed this. But he's also been very open to working with people and helpful. And then, you know, I said to somebody, and they said they can't get them where I say, well, that, you know, we can do a cab or something. I mean, we look at for solutions for problems. I said, there's always the blue light special where they transport people. And, you know, he's willing to do that as well, um, to shelters. And I've been to a lot of shelters, and there are some that are better than others. There are some that, you know, will take even animals in. And so, you know, you just have to do what you can for people.
Right. Uh, John has a question.
And it's my understanding under the SB 110 that there were some changes. And I just wanted to ask a couple of questions on those. Yeah, I, when I read through it, it appears that now, in order to claim residency in the town, that if they were staying in the hotel, they would have to continue to stay there and pay rent for 30 days straight. And, um, or that month to show that they're doing it, so. And that, that's the new change where you can't just say, hey, I live here. Do you have to show 30 days of proof of pain? But is that, that was one of the big things.
They're gonna have to show. But I mean, a lot of the, I, I, I know of a case, actually several cases, the amount of money that some of these hotels was collecting in rent is astronomical.
Yeah, yeah.
And they wouldn't.
And that's the ma, one of the major changes in the SB 10.
Yeah, and they, I mean, and a hotel is, is not a residence.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it now, it now creates that thing where you have to have actually established some type of residency. Whether you're renting a hotel or you're renting it, but you have to be sure that you're paying for something, not just receiving. Um, been placed here by assistance in, in, I think, what did you, it's, uh, welfare hopping or something?
Well, hot potato, welfare dumping. I mean, it's not a nice term to use for anybody, but it's a, and that sets up a dynamic where towns are kind of pitted against each other, which is not a good situation either. You know, I've worked in this community for a very long time, so I've developed, you know, relationships, but I also know that there are people who, you know, the turnover or whatever, and you can kind of get into a position where people get tired or burnt out or had a bad week. And, you know, then they say, well, I'm not taking that person. I'm not taking that person. I'm not working with that person. And, you know, that puts us in a really tough situation.
You know, if they try to implement this program again, of putting people into rooms that were designed to be bedrooms, not kitchens, not dwelling units, not a place to live in, we have to speak up and stop it. Cause I'm gonna tell you, it was a nightmare. An absolute nightmare.
Seeing some of the conditions.
Bedroom that it, this, it wasn't designed for preparing meals and cooking food. There's no proper ventilation. There's no safe way of doing it. There's no, there isn't even in these rooms, a place designed for trash, which builds up. And the multiple calls that I went on, I won't even name the three facilities, was absurd. And I was, I got calls from the, the owners because they didn't know how to deal with it. But it can't happen again. They're not designed, motel rooms are not designed to live in. They're not dwelling units. They're bedrooms. That's what they are. And look at what happened in North Conway.
Sadly, unfortunately, some of those, I've stood out in the parking lot, I think you have too, and seen things we shouldn't have seen. Yeah, I mean, and then other people have stayed there. And actually, actually, it was easy to lobby some of the state reps because they, one of the state reps called me right after Christmas and said, I made the mistake of putting my father-in-law in one of the local hotels. And what happens going on there? And I said, well, since you asked, this is exactly what's going on. Um, and I'll be very happy to tell you. And so, and then they said, we had to get them out of there. I said, yep, you do. But, you know, it's, it's just, um, it's, it's, it was a very tough situation. It's been a very tough situation and.
Any other questions for, uh, Heather on this subject?
I do have one. You've identified every homeless individual in the town at Tilton? Okay, so, um, somewhere, maybe there's somebody living in a tent, a couple of people or whatever uh, that you haven't seen yet. Do you have any indications of what? Uh, how they're obtaining resources? How many be of these people? I mean, I have empathy. I do, I truly do.
I think they're staying out of the limelight or out of the area because they know, and they, they, they talk, and everybody knows everybody kind of deal. Um, maybe it was some, a camp that was in Laconia, and they know that obviously they were, they were pushed, or they had that cleanup in Laconia. Um, are there areas that I don't know? We have a lot of woods in Tilton, um, so I can't put a number on it. But I can truly say that in the area that we've, you know, the rail that comes to McDonald's, Super 8, um, we've been behind J. Jill, you know, we put some trespass signs out there, uh, Nickerson's, um, there was one out, out in that area. Um, but going further out towards Lockmere. Um, that's when we, we just, it's hard to get the resources for us to get out there and see those areas.
I, I hear from people who do what they call the foot patrols for the homeless. And, you know, I'll hear from them maybe a couple of times a week. So occasionally they'll go out there and they'll find them. Where are they getting their resources? Food pantries, different places like that, tents. Um, they try to talk to them to tell them about shelters, what, where they can go, where they can get into. Try to get them help. A lot of people say no. You know, it's when they did the cleanup in Laconia, I had told the chief, the welfare director, she actually, she was worried the, um, the shelters were gonna get filled, so she booked a hotel room, and nobody would go. Because the hotel room, what happened initially was a lot of these hotels are, um, a lot of these hotels, initially when, when the program started, were taking everybody. And then a lot of the hotels said, wait a minute, there's problems coming in. So they stopped taking them. So only certain hotels took them. We ended up with some of them that would continue to take them. So unfortunately, there was other problems now in these hotels that kept them, continued to have problems.
At this time, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody online that has any questions for our welfare director? I hear none. Okay. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate the help. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the backup.
I appreciate the partnership.
Yes.
Thanks for being accommodating while we take over your, uh, space, your, well, your cave under.
Oh, my little.
Your little office that's no longer.
Cubby hole.
Joyce used to call it the Harry Potter office.
Yeah, it's, it's about it. All right. We are now going to talk about the MOU for welfare assistance, uh, or thereof. Lack of.
Well, uh, I think it's about a, I was gonna look at the date, about a year or so, a little bit more ago. We, we were trying to look for a backup for our welfare, um, and came up, uh, Jeannie came up with a, an MOU from the, I think it was the town attorney, and I had met with a couple of towns or town and a city about doing that. And, um, I think it's become kind of a moot point at this point because both entities that I talked to, one had some, uh, anticipated personnel changes, but they were not too keen on it because of the legal ease in the, um, and the formality of it. And then the second one, um, really said that it was too formal and too long. And then with this issue with the homelessness, where we're kind of pitted against each other, I do feel like there could be some conflicts. So I, I would like to, you know, throw an idea, but I don't, I, I think that would be better served in non-public, but.
I had asked if your meeting was back. While, for me, it's sudden, but why were we not doing it in-house? Why did we decide to take it out of house? I know we had a relation, ship with, um, Samerton's Welfare Director for a while, but we also did it in-house when it was necessary. It was so much easier because
It was.
No conflict.
I think that, I think though, when we didn't have the availability of Samerton, we, you were looking elsewhere within the, the different towns, options. And at that time, we didn't really have the availability of
Yeah.
Boys. But now we do.
Used to back her up. I wasn't even asked.
I mean, over the, historically, since I've been here 26 plus years ago, I was, um, I know. I was backed up. I was backed up by the health officer. I was backed up by, um, a selectman. Uh, yeah, I was backed up by the deputy town clerk for a while. Health officer, selectman, deputy town clerk. Then it went to, Samerton, then it went to the selectman secretary. So that's been historically, but, um, and I've done coverage for the health officer as well.
Right.
Can we, is there a way to keep it in-house?
I, I think it's, I could make a suggestion, but I'd, I'd like to do it in non-public because I, it's a personnel matter.
Okay. We can do that.
And the, the person isn't aware of it either, so.
All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion. Dismissal promotion. Okay, on time. Time being 6:06, I make a motion to move into non-public session per RSA 91A colon 2A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or investigation of any charges against him unless the public employee affected has the right to a public meeting. Request that a meeting be open and in which case the request shall be granted.
Second.
Rule call vote.
Yes, man, yes.
Boston, yes.
Constantino, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Hold on a minute.
This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to, no, we don't have to seal the minutes. We don't need to seal those minutes. Yes, you can come in, Kim.
Seal them until the matter is resolved.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public until the matters are resolved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One second. At this time, folks, I'm sorry, but we've got a lot going on. And I think you all want to hear about the update on on the town hall ceiling project. So we are now going to go back into non-public and we have several items, including evaluations going on tonight. So we are going to go into non-public and probably between 8:00 and 8:15, we'll be coming out of non-public. So now at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public per RSA 91A colon 3 to the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected has a right to a public meeting and request that the meeting be open, in which case this shall be granted. And RSA 91A colon 3 to matters which, if discussed in public, would add would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of this board unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine or levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. Do I hear a second?
Second, Scanlon.
Rule call vote.
Yes, man, yes.
Boston, yes.
Constantino, yes.
Scanlon, sec, Scanlon, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Hold on a minute.
This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome back, everyone. This time I'd like to make a motion that we seal the minutes of the June 15, 2023, because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board permanently. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Update on Town Hall Ceiling Project, Jeannie and Tim. It looks like he's online, though.
Well, his name's up there.
Tim, you online?
Yes, I am.
Uh huh.
Is this on?
It's got to be green.
It is green.
So you all received the Town Hall Ceiling Project timeline from a couple of days ago. And we are on schedule, I would say. Tim has has worked. I mean, everybody's worked really hard, but Tim's put some yeoman work into the IT piece of it. There were a couple, there are a couple contracts that I think you have, Pat.
Yep.
Need to be signed. One is Josh Carter, and that's for the lighting. And the second one is, what is the second one? I don't remember, Pat.
John Pratt.
John Pratt, that's the drop ceiling. We did get. We did ask for other quotes for drop ceilings and didn't get. We had one person come in and say, I'm not doing this job and left. We had one person say they're going to come in and they didn't, they didn't show up. And I think we're still waiting on another person, but I don't think if we want to keep on schedule, these this company is ready to go to keep us on schedule. The other item is the painting. So we did have somebody from the Department of Corrections come in and agree that they could fit within our timeline. It would be free, other than we would provide the supplies. Pat got a quote for a painting from someone and that was $13,000. So I don't know how you can beat free. So I don't know if you want us to get another quote or if you want to decide whether we should move forward with. We don't, you, the bottom line is, I don't think you need to make a decision tonight because we're weeks away from that. So we have some time if you want us to look at finding another quote. But we did hear from the Department of Corrections that they could, they could do it and they could meet our timeline. So.
I will say I have cautioned you on both Tim and Jeannie on the Department of Corrections because they are the same ones that have reneged on us at least eight times in the last four years trying to do work at the outbuilding. Said, yes, we bought the materials and so on, so forth. And same person that they're dealing with, not to say that they won't. Trust me, I'm thrilled to pieces that they're going to come to Town Hall and do this for free. But we've worked with these same people and they've said, yes, 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 yes. And the day comes and they don't show up because of staffing or so on, so forth, legitimate reasons. So it's always good to have a backup, but free is always better.
Okay, is that what you'd like us to do is get another quote?
We already have another quote.
Well, you said three, so we have two. We have a free and a $13,000 quote. I don't know of any other painters. I think.
I did get it other way.
That's the one that doesn't have to be signed tonight, right? You don't have to decide it tonight, but if you want us to find one more, we can do that and we'll come back at the next meeting. And you can. Give that a shot.
What's that?
One more.
One more if we can, if we can. Okay, is that what you'd like us to do? Okay, two issues that we need some clarification on. The upstairs bathroom. Was it the intent of this board to have it just to be for employee needs? Or was it your intent to have it also be available to the public? Would have to be available to the public.
Why does it have to be available?
Because we have no other bathroom in Town Hall. Well, it was always during meetings, planning board budget. We'd send people up there. I've used that facility a number of times. And it's not, it's not ADA accessible, but right now Town Hall is not a going to be ADA accessible from the street. Because the ramp door is not accessible. So. Even if it was, you can't get upstairs. That's right. So I think if somebody needs the bathroom, it could be pointed out that there is one up there. It's a little small, but up there. I had said before, I'd have some hand sanitizer stationed there because some people feel they have to have hot water to clean their hands.
Well, if we during construction and put a sign, no public bathroom on the outside and stick a porta potty up at the island where we always used to have one. Somebody comes in and say, you know, if they're in the Town Hall up at the office, they got to go or they got to go. But if somebody's just walking up to the Town Hall saying, oh, there's got to be a bathroom in there, they'll see a sign, no public restrooms. Use porta potty across the combies.
Good idea. So one of the reasons I ask is because we did, Tim and I received an email from the town clerk tax collector message that they've put together that they want on the website. And I have not done that yet because I need a clarification from you because in their message, it says there are no public restrooms available. And that's what they want us to put on the website. So.
Do we, we have to have them available? But.
Instruction.
I think it's an extenuating service.
You don't have to.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think there's any law out there that says we must provide a public restroom. Certainly.
There's a lot of people that come off the street to use the bathrooms and only the bathrooms and not town business.
Yeah, and I think John is.
If we put a sign on the door, no public restrooms, porta potty up the street, opposite combies.
That's if you can get a porta potty.
Yeah, why would we?
So why, yeah, can't we just say no public restroom?
Restroom during construction.
And then they could.
Or Mills, they're open at the, they're open at the pond, I mean, at the park, riverfront.
There's other businesses that have public restrooms.
I don't think we need to direct anyone anywhere. Just there's no public restroom.
Irving has some of the nicest restrooms. But I would just, I think you're right. Let's put a sign up that says, no public restroom.
Like you said, during construction.
And you could put during construction.
Yeah.
Okay, the other issue is, does it?
Consensus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Joe, okay. So the other issue is the entry. So the last discussion was that we were going to have people come through the front door. Use the back stairs as the egress. That was my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong. In talking with the Kevin, talking with the town clerk tax collector, because the stairs in the front are so steep, the doors open out, they're very heavy. There's a feeling that probably not the best way to come into the building. Kevin said he could build a ramp or steps there, but it seems to be that the preference is coming through School Street. Kevin has fixed the door, the one door. They're facing on the outside, looking into the building, fix the left door, so it's.
If you're online, can you please mute your mics, please?
He's fixed one door, so you open the other door. The locks have been have been fixed. And we did have Sean, the deputy fire chief, come over today. He said they would allow a small table and a chair there right in the in the lobby because this is a temporary situation so that if somebody comes in from that, they can sit there and do their paperwork. Kim or Becky can come downstairs and meet with them. Or if they felt like they wanted to walk up, they could walk up. And then in terms of emergency egress, they go out the other way so that everybody's coming up the School Street entrance that way. And they have that little station at the bottom. But they also wanted to put that on in their message and I wanted to make sure that that's what the board wanted. So we can have, both doors will be unlocked.
Yep.
The main street and School Street.
Right.
And people can decide because doesn't the School Street door that opens out as well?
Yeah, but there's the landing is a little bit more comfortable.
Well, there's not a landing, you still come down on a step.
The one step.
And then it's not as dramatic.
Right.
It's not as dramatic as Main Street.
Right.
Not like when you open, it's not pushing you back with the steps behind.
And it's not very heavy.
Yeah, it's not as heavy.
So just put a sign on the Main Street one that says during construction, use School Street door. Sign on School Street door. Yeah, we'll sign it appropriately.
Well, yeah, and I think there's a feeling that then you know where the people are coming up there.
Right.
You know, because the way, if you haven't been up there, the way they've configured the walls, that if somebody comes up this other way, you can't really see it somewhere. And we have no surveillance. So that at least if they're coming up through the School Street, if that's the way people are coming up, they come up through those doors and you you can see them right away.
They're facing it.
Because they're facing.
If you have it planned out and it looks like it works, I'm good.
Yeah, it's 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 all set up that way. And then they can walk, the way that they've got the panels is that they can walk past Becky and Kim and get to land use.
Right.
Thanks.
I think that's the way to go.
Just put a sign that's a.
Also, I was going to say that the clerk's office had requested a call button. So we have two wireless that will be placed outside of the doors. And they can be set to different rain tones upstairs so that they can tell if someone is needing their assistance downstairs, which which, you know, which side they're on.
Great, nice.
Thank you, Tim. All right.
So that's that's it, all I have, unless you have any questions on the Town Hall project.
Tim, you got anything to add?
I just wanted to say that all the systems are up and running. If you saw my email, we lost a power unit on one of the servers. It just arrived at my house tonight, so I'll be replacing that in the morning. And the, so all of our applications are running. And the clerk's systems have all been tested, you know, from the application side, they're all set. The health officer as well tonight is all set. All the phones are operational. And tomorrow I'll be, after a meeting at the Town Hall, I'll be going down to Public Works and completing, getting Gale set up. But unlike what I thought originally, I didn't think we'd have the ability to have the console down there. It looks like with some changes that we made, we may be able to operate the console down there. So we will give that a try and see if that works. And if not, we'll go back to Plan B. And then let's see, I think, I think that was it. So so we're in pretty, I think we're in pretty good shape. It's it's not, I mean, the Maypole idea worked really well. And it's going to keep the majority of the cables out of anyone's way. So, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you, Tim. And huge thank you to you and Jeannie for organizing all of this and all your hard work over the weekend. I know I had popped in a couple of days during that, the last few days. And can't believe all of the work that you folks have had to do to make this work. So huge thank you to both of you.
One, one other issue I just remembered. Gale will be down, working down at DPW. Their hours are 7:00 to 3:30. That's when they lock the gates. So we're assuming she's on their hours, 7:00 to 3:30 because of safety issues. We don't want her down there alone. Right.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Right. Right?
That's it.
Oh.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Does anybody online have any questions for the town administrator and finance director on the ceiling project? No, okay. We'll head to selectmen's reports. Scott, you're up.
I don't have anything this week.
Okay. Joe, you're up.
My only report is I have not heard a word from Titus. I don't know what's going on with that. I just don't know.
An Old Home Day?
Old Home Day is the last Saturday.
Monday? Monday?
Old Home Day is the last Saturday in June. At the Pines Community Center on Monday is the Citizen of the Year Award. I wanna say it's five o'clock, but. Go ahead and that would be my last piece of info and I have it in this phone.
I think it might be six. So you'll verify it. Oh.
I think you might be, I think you might be right, John.
Pretty sure it's six. Get there early.
And six o'clock it is.
All right, six o'clock, Pines Community for the Citizen of the Year Award.
That's right.
Okay. Catherine, you're up.
Just a couple of things. One of them, I think, is just an FYI. We had a park commissioners meeting Monday night at Riverfront and we used to have access to the parks cameras, but when we changed the I don't know what it's called, the device where all the information goes in, disseminates out. Bob and I had access and we didn't follow through to get access, but we do need that access. There's vandalism taking place and various other things that are going on that, I mean, it's not fair to have. I think Tim's the only one that had access now to have him sit there for hours scrolling through it. So I'm gonna ask Tim to put Bob and I back on those cameras. The other thing is, I had occasion to go to the dump on Wednesday.
Transfer station.
It's a dump. It's very dump my stuff. And it was dumped. So when I was a selectman, a few years ago, when I was leaving.
Changed, huh?
Well, our Public Works Director was working on a program where we would have stickers and it just seemed like a great program and not implemented. So when I went there, I had copious amounts of bags of garbage from barbecue. And the gentleman that was there was very nice. And I was stunned that I thought I was going to have to dump all that garbage into a purple bag. Cause it wasn't in purple bags and they didn't have any stickers. And I was more than willing to buy the bags, but, so the final resolution was he allowed me to tie the bags to my garbage bags. Why haven't we gone to a simpler system? I take my daughter to Sammerton, she doesn't have a truck. So I take her every other Saturday to get rid of her trash. And they have a system where it's stickers. You buy the stickers, you stick them on any bag you want, you toss them in. It's very streamlined, it's very simple. It's not cumbersome.
Then what would we do with all the purple bags that we have?
So, so here's the thing, I bought a, there were five bags in there and I happened to have five bags. And as I was leaving, I thought, oh, I should have bought more bags. Because, you know, another event comes up, I can put them in there and I'm gonna be doing it, but.
You have to go there to buy the stickers.
Yeah, I mean, it I mean, really to answer it, so what? We've got bags, if people want the bags and don't want the stickers, they've got them. But my point is we don't, I didn't know that I had to have my garbage in a purple bag to throw it in that dumpster. I knew I had to pay to get rid of my garbage. But I didn't know they had to be purple bags and only purple bags in the dumpster. I mean, I was gonna buy a roll of bags and just throw the roll of bags in there.
Exactly. If you'd have done that, you'd have been covered.
Well, like I said, I tied just as he wanted me to. He was, like I said, he was very polite and very nice. I tied each purple bag to my bag and threw it in there. It seemed ludicrous to me that they had to be purple bags.
So as you know, we've looked at all these different programs and systems and how we can do it and how we can implement it and what size bag and you know, if somebody brings in a huge contractor bag and not this size bag and all that. And we've looked at all those, so. Only thing I can suggest is you can come up with a better plan, present it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Public Works Director had a great plan. He had a great plan.
And this was one of the ones, and it's posted on the website.
This wasn't his plan, this was our plan.
I think that we should wait until he comes in, he's gonna do his quarterly report next week, the next time? Twenty ninth?
Can we ask him to review that?
Yeah, we can ask him anything we want.
Reason we went with purple bags is because we owned a pallet of them.
And also because of size.
We can get some stickers and throw away all the purple bags.
I think he's got great plans for that transfer station and I think you as a selectman need to hear them. We all have heard them. I would rather you hear them from him. We know what's going on.
Just like I said, it's ridiculous just because we have purple bags.
We don't wanna spoil the standard.
The problem with the, the problem with the bags.
And we'll buy. Use them in town hall.
The problem with the bags is that some people have fifty-five gallon black bags and can fill them with contractor green and do it. And some people do it. So we figured out the size of the bag and did that. But yes.
One size fits all sticker. So it doesn't make any difference if you throw it away, five pounds or fifty.
Listen, eight forty-seven, let's move on.
Oh, please.
John.
The only thing I had is Nate's not on there. I know he was there earlier, Nate Lencioni. And he was asking, he was going to be using a, he had a, some type of loader or truck that he was gonna use. And asked if anybody at the parks, if they need anything at the Memorial Park, because he's right there, that they'd be welcome to use, he could help out. And I informed him that that would go through the park commission, because they, they, they keep track of all that stuff. The other thing that he has brought up and I've seen is the upright use, that, you know, the little shrubs like this, things like that. Well, they, they take up the size of this room now. And they've overgrown, which we've always left because the house didn't look behind it. And the next part of it is, is that because we always left them up, because it hid the house behind it, the fence is now enclosed in the stump. But at some point, we, it would be nice to redo that somehow, not, don't have to cut out, might have to leave that piece of wood in there and so we might have to carve it out or something. But to address that whole issue and take a look and have the parks also take a look at some type of landscaping and he would like to help out with that. And I'd be wanting to help out with any labor involved. Inside those shrubs, there is a plaque and a little monument that nobody ever knew was there, but it is there and.
We knew it was there.
But nobody else can see or.
They can't see.
Yeah. So, yeah. So looking at that, and the other thing is we, a while ago, we spoke, historical society talked about putting a a new maple tree in there and asked about that in honor of Ken Randall, his Bonnie was talking about putting one in. So we cut down quite a few maple trees in there that died. Number three years ago, and that they were thinking of replacing because it's so beautiful in the fall as a backdrop.
It's an awfully small park for such a big tree. And there's so many big trees around it already.
Might be. Take a look at that park, I think maybe and have the parks commission maybe.
Send them all an email because I know Bob Hardy and I I think Peter Fogg, but he's not on the park commission anymore, have looked at that fence. Because there was an issue, the people that owned that property before, their plow people damaged the fence. And we've looked at it and it's, yeah. I'll have them all look at that area, cause.
And the tree, that overgrown tree and what type of thing could be done to make it still look nice now that he's making the house look nice and.
That's nice he wants to help. It's very nice, but.
And he offered his help and I, I thanked him myself.
It'll be an interesting project.
Yeah. I can't actually go ahead. So thanks, Nate. And I think we'll all get together this summer and figure something out to make it. That's it for me.
Four of you are going to Old Home, Home Day, plus the two citizens year. Are you bringing anybody on the truck with you?
Maybe. I might be a plus one.
Plus one, plus one or two?
Might be two.
Cause I'm doing the candy bags.
I might be plus one. I'll find out.
One, two, okay. All right, got a good count on that. Okay, June twenty-sixth is our next executive committee meeting. And a couple of weeks, about four, six weeks ago, we talked about committee members signing up. We wanted to interview them. We have a committee member that wants to join. We happen to know this person very well. So I don't know what, what the board wants to do. Do you wanna interview? I know that there's openings now in zoning. So I, we need to be consistent in what we do. Whatever we do, we need to be consistent. So it's up to you. I have, I have no qualms either way, so.
What committee?
This is parks committee. Doesn't matter, we just need to be consistent in all our committees, what we're gonna do.
There's a little bit different in different committees that have authority and some are just advisory. Advisory, but they do have authority over things for events and that.
That's very good printing.
I'm good with it.
Everybody wanna do, pass it around so everybody can see it.
It was zoning and, and planning and stuff, that's.
Well, do you wanna make it for just, you know, the, the non-advisory committees we interview?
I think we do it on a case by case.
So hold them back? And then talk about it? Each one?
If we know the applicant well enough and are comfortable enough, not interview them, fine. But if we don't, because some of us are gonna know some of the applicants and some of us aren't. Those who don't know should be able to interview.
Okay, but then that leads you into, okay, what? I don't wanna say this because it doesn't apply to the applicant, but what stops people from stacking the deck, if you would, with their friends?
Well, I think as John was saying, you have some committees, like planning and zoning. You really need some kind of background for planning and zoning.
To talk to those people, I think.
We've lined planning and zone, we've lined planning and zoning with no backgrounds.
And that's a mistake.
The whole planning and zoning with no background.
That's a huge mistake.
Well, that's a subject, those are the people that volunteer. And they educate themselves as they go.
And it was, there were years where you always, if it was a warm body, we took.
Which is exactly the problem we're coming into.
Even budget. It's not a committee that just anybody, oh, hey, I feel like being on budget and they know nothing about, you know, financing, budgeting and.
Different advisory committees and decision and.
We only have one committee that's advisory.
Economic development.
And then I don't even, I even consider that committee more than just advisory.
We don't do anything on our own.
So here's an idea, we, we all make the decision, there's five of us here. We interview. If one of us says we wanna interview, we'll interview.
Case by case.
If, if all of us unanimously feel like we know everything about this and, because that's what the decision would be made if we did interview.
Okay, so let's back up a minute. About six weeks ago, six or eight weeks ago, we had a bunch of ones to sign up. And I asked the question, how do we know if there's an opening? And the opening was, if it, if we have it in this folder, then there's an opening. Okay. So if it's in this folder and it's to be signed, we're gonna hold it out and then we're gonna ask it. But because if we pass it around, it's gonna get signed without anybody asking about it.
But let's not put it in that.
Then let's not put it in that, let's put it in a separate one and just say to be discussed or something.
Or we'll just discuss the ones in there. We don't have to have a new folder, probably.
We can all agree, if we can all agree that if there's a committee one in there that we'll discuss it first before signing it, fine.
Why don't we have a folder that says, committee applicants?
There you go.
And then nobody signs it until we discuss it. Fine. All right.
That way, when we're sitting here, I know that my brains sometimes drool out.
Yeah, because otherwise, it's like Sign Now. Sign Now is a great tool when we were in COVID. But if you have a pay, if you have a question about payroll, if you have a question about.
Read that thing.
I know it. So if you have a question about a payable, okay? I can, I can call Tim and ask Tim, hey, Tim, what about this? But you're not gonna know, you're not gonna know, you're not gonna know, and you're not gonna know. And you're just gonna sign it.
That's right.
Or if I have a question, I don't have the opportunity to ask it because three other people already signed it and it's already.
That's absolutely correct.
That's what happens.
It's, there's no.
That's the downfall of that.
Why bother asking? Well, maybe we just stop Sign Now.
And in fact.
Sign them the way we always did.
Then you gotta go in every week to, to do it and you might as well be.
I've had occasions to go in.
It won't go approved until it's five. The, and this is a very common thing, because it was last year that there was an appointment to a committee. That folder, that form was in there to the Sign Now. And I looked at it and it had like three, four signatures on it and the whole form was blank. No name on it or anything.
But, all right.
I brought it up at a meeting. Should we do it? And it still didn't.
Time now is eight fifty-eight. Is there any new business? Is there anybody online that needs to ask the board anything, any question? I missed the step last week and I feel, the last time we met and I felt terrible about it. Do any new business?
I do have one final thing. If there's nobody that wants to comment online. Two, one, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're right. We didn't ask about it the last time and.
Were we having some kind of technical issue?